This time I'll call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To welcome everyone here this evening, we do have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be to consider the approval of the minutes from our last regular meeting that was held on May 24th. The council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections?
Move approval.
Seconded by Craig, seconded by Steve to approve the minutes as they have been presented,
we will move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the next agenda item. Which is the award of bids, agenda item number two, consider the award of the quotation for the Street Department quote, storage building, heating, insulation, overhead doors. I'll call on Jason Anderson, our city engineer and director of Public Works to present this agenda item. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Our 2022 capital budget did include $75,000 for this work. The work is to insulate and heat the existing cold storage building at the Street Department property, 901 Oak Street. This scope of work included furnishing all of the labor, materials, and equipment that would be needed to insulate and heat the 120 by 70 by 16-foot cold storage building and install two new insulated overhead garage doors. Purpose of the project is to offer us more climate-controlled space for us to store a lot of our equipment and some materials that need, they're a little more temperature-sensitive, I guess. On June 6th, one quote was received from Susner Construction of Marshall. That quote for the base bid came in at $89,700. I think a couple reasons for the higher quote than what was estimated was that we did determine after time of putting together our cost estimate that we needed more insulation to meet the energy code requirements. We were a little bit light on that after our first consultation. So that, along with just the ever-increasing cost of construction right now and materials, has caused it to come in a little high. We did ask for some numbers for a couple different alternates, but we don't need to discuss those. We're well out of over-budget there at 89,700. So, we do have a couple considerations. Staff would recommend that we go ahead and award the work at $89,700. An alternative option, if the council wished to keep it under budget, would be to remove the two overhead doors. We had Susner give us a deduct number for that, and that would put us under budget with a total cost of $73,975. So, that's what we have to consider. And I know that Dean Kudrin, our Public Works Superintendent, is here as well if there's any questions for him.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. We'll open up for questions from the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Russ.
I have a few questions. I look at this as saying, is this a want or a need? Storage space for critical city equipment, can someone tell me what that is? What's critical city equipment that we've never had it heated before?
Dean, I'll invite you up if you want to come up here, but it is important. We do have quite a bit of equipment that could use.
Just curious, because that building is 30 years old?
Yeah.
And we've never heated it before, but all of a sudden we need to heat the entire building for critical city equipment?
Well, for one thing, we went to four routes, so we do have an extra motor grader. Last year, we used the MASH property. It has a little section of storage that was heated. We use that for that blade, our two sweepers, and our Vector. So, right now, currently, we have four pieces of equipment that should be heated. Currently, before we used the MASH property, we kept the sweepers in the matte bus garage, the extra garage through the winter months. And then the Vector truck, we kept in the, our storage that we have now, which right now, if you ever come out there, that storage is full. One of our plow trucks is in the cold storage facility. It's always plugged in in the wintertime. So, it's just, even if it's 50 degrees, getting in a 50-degree vehicle with hydraulics and everything, it's much easier on the equipment.
The other, you also previously had the Rellco building that you don't have now.
Correct. Yep. We lost that, too. So, and the Vector was in there most of the time, but most of it, between the street shop and the MASH and the Rellco is where we kept it.
Is this the same building that the staff was going to do some of the work at one point in time? I mean, I remember talking about a building that staff was going to do some of the work.
We had the outside. We were going to tin the outside. We had that done last year, fall. We were going to do that, but we ran out of time.
And how much, have we looked at the heat factor, the cost factor for that, to heat that building? I mean, it's a good-sized building.
It is. And that's one of the reasons we upped the insulation value, because originally I had quoted four heating units in there. They're all radiant heat, the tube style. And we down, we upped the insulation value and reduced the amount of heat tubes.
And you say we don't have enough room at the MASH property?
No. Right, currently, right now, the property we got were, I know PD wants that property, that heated space for their stuff, which I understand, they got equipment, and it's got to be more secured for them. We were hoping maybe to utilize some of that space, but with the setup they have, we, apparently, we can't even use that space if they're in there.
My last question on that, excuse me, my last question on that, I believe we have a lot of state equipment, hazardous materials and stuff, equipment sitting down at the fire station in the old ambulance garage. The mayor's center is sitting empty, or pretty much empty, Craig? You know, is there a possibility that PD could use some of that? I'm just looking at this building, and it's, I'm not saying it's not needed, but it's going to be, I mean, to pay it, to heat it all year long in the winter months, and I was, again, the plow truck should be used to cold weather. I mean, put tank heaters on and plug them in, you know, I don't know. I'm not.
The blade is, I'm not sure. It's a rental blade we use. We hire it from RNG. So, currently, like I said, it's always in a heated space. That's out at 4:00 in the morning. There's nothing worse than getting in a cold piece of equipment with cold hydraulics. So, it's, to me, it's not a want, it's a need.
If I can jump into, you know, we talked about the MASH property, and I know our public safety director is here as well, but part of getting out of that heated space is it was distinctly separated. It's in the back of one of those larger buildings at the MASH property. It's separated and heated, and we're going to try to create an impound area for the PD out there that will utilize this space as well, and it gives them security. You know, they need the heated, secure space for certain vehicles at certain times during investigations or what have you, and we just need to have an area for them that we don't intermingle. So, I don't know if you ever, I don't think we brought council out to the MASH site this past winter, but, you know, Dean's crew had that small heated space just packed full of stuff. We're, this is well-needed space. I think it's been needed for a long time, and I think we understand that there's a high cost to it, but it is a long-term investment. If you look at the cost for us to get these facilities built and managed, and how we were able to get the MASH property at such a low cost and have that for cold storage, and by adding this $90,000 roughly, you know, we're able to gain a lot of, we'll call it heated space, but it's not 70-degree or 65-degree shop. I mean, we're talking about 50-degree space to keep equipment and materials, so.
Okay. Other questions?
The only, not a question, comments is, it is over-budget, and I wouldn't be opposed to leaving the garage doors out, because they can be put into a budget next year. They can be done separate from the project. Not saying that the quote is high, but we might get a more advantageous quote, too, because an overhead garage door themselves might just quote the doors, or, you know, somebody else. But I would be in favor of the 73,975 and leaving the garage doors out, to try to stick to our budget of 75,000. And I don't think that'd be a problem, Dean. We just build them to the budget next year, then.
Right. I'd just add it into the budget.
Eventually, it has to be done, but then we stay within budget and within where we need to be.
And that's one of the things that Jason and I looked at, too. And that's why you got a separate cost on the doors, just to reduce it by 15 grand. Doors are expensive.
They are, but if you just put a bid out for overhead doors, we may get three, four different bidders on those, and maybe save a dime here or there.
Do I know the person that gave us the quote went to three different places and got the best quote they could, but not to say that we couldn't get cheaper in the future. I don't know that.
Question that I have, if we don't do the doors, what's in there for doors now? So, are they insulated doors now that it would facilitate? So, we're going to, they're not, we're going to insulate this and heat it, but we don't have heatable doors?
Correct. They're just a metal door, single-sided metal door.
Sounds like we're defeating the purpose, then.
Yep.
No, actually, that was a conversation I was having, what you have to with the, you know, as far as the doors, getting those in, kind of thinking along the same line that Craig was, are we wasting a lot of the heat by not doing the doors at this time? But if there's, it doesn't mean that it couldn't be done after the first of the year, too.
Correct.
If we put it in, so, I guess I was just kind of the, here are your thoughts on what you had on the doors, so.
We, I think we put 10 grand in, we, for doors, if I remember right. And when I originally put it in the budget, it was 10 grand I allowed for the doors.
Yeah, and the deduct was in the $15,000 range. You know, I think the question for the council is just, do we think we'll save much money by waiting? You know, I don't, I don't know that we will, but we wanted to give you guys that option, understanding that we are over-budget, and we wanted to give, give an opportunity to keep it in line, so.
What, did want to bring up one other thing on the CO2 detectors. Is there typically, are you running vehicles in this shop, or is it just basically drive-in, turn-off?
Yep. Drive in and back out, or drive out, either way. And they're nuts, and then they're running it all.
And we don't have staff that'll be in there full-time, all the time. That's another reason to give that as an alternate.
We have to air up when you start them, though. I mean, they're not going to be aired up. They're not plugged into an umbilical cord, so they'll still have to build air at least for a few minutes.
It don't take them long. Sometimes, if they don't, if they sit only a day, they very, you lose very little air.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Craig?
Well, yeah, I guess my question is, is what about availability on overhead doors? I mean, coming into early spring, there was a nine-month backlog on availability of overhead doors. Has that changed?
There still is a backlog. It's quite a while. I ordered doors for at the airport.
So, we might not pay for these until next year when they're put in?
Well, that's very possible.
That might self-regulate.
Very possible, yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
My question, Mr. Mayor, would be, when you're looking at the overage, this is over-budget. And we talk about Councilmember Schaefer's argument or question about how much electricity or heat are we wasting? You know, 89,000, 73,000, are we looking at $15,000 worth of electricity out the window? And that's, that's my question. I mean, if we, if it balances and we pay it now and we can save that much money, then it makes sense to put the doors in now. But if it's not, then.
Natural gas?
What's that?
Is this natural gas heat, or what?
Yes, it'll be natural gas.
Natural gas heat, so.
Natural gas is expensive.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of gas.
It is, yep. It's, and I don't know how much heat you lost, lose through them doors, but it's got to be a fair amount.
Hurts a lot.
Yeah, you know, just a single metal door on the outside, so.
Well, then, I guess the question I would ask, is there some place in your budget that you can steal the $15,000 from? So, we're not necessarily going, we're going over-budget on this project, but you're still keeping your budget in line, because obviously, we do budgets and.
We'll have to take a serious look at that, if we do decide to go with the total cost. And there's probably is. Last year, I know we saved quite a bit on salt area, so I'll do a pencil number to it, but I would say we saved more than that in salt.
We must have saved that just on snowplow this spring already, right? But that doesn't mean we're going to have a dry fall.
Right.
So, much of the budget is dependent on what happens.
Yeah, that's, you know, the future is, it's hard to judge, but I would say, and not only that, if you look, you know, if you take the equipment side of it, the payload are, we got about 10,000 more than what we expected in resale on our old loader this year, too. So, hopefully, I'll do some digging into the budget and see if we can save that money.
Total department budget will be in line.
Yeah.
So, maybe some line adjustments between this project and some other, other line item.
Just, one other question on the doors, were they actually going to just insulate the doors or replace the doors with?
Replace. Total replace, yep.
Total replacement.
The doors in there, they're probably original, I don't know. They're not in the best shape, but so I thought now's the best time to, you know, insulate, just will insulate the doors and renew them. That's rails and everything. Some of the rails, they got a little tweaked, you know, hit here or there, but for the most part, they still work, but they're not very efficient as far as insulation value.
Any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation. What's the wishes of the council?
I move approval of the recommendation, including the overhead doors.
Motion by Craig. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion. I'd like to add to it that the overage has to come out of the budget someplace in the Street Department or Dean's budget already.
Okay, motion is made. Motion seconded. Discussion on that motion. If not, we'll move to a vote on the motion. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items on the consent agenda up on the screen. On the consent agenda this evening, consider the approval of the Red Baron Arena sponsorship renewal with Ace Hardware. Consider the request of Southwest Minnesota University for the Homecoming Parade Saturday, October 5, 1. The wastewater treatment facility, there's a payment invoice to Bolton and Mink. Consider the grant of driveway access easement with the Marshall School District in the MASH addition. Consider the preliminary plat of the CDI addition and introduce that plat and call for the public hearing. Surplus items from the Street Department would be a vehicle hoist that would be put up for sale or considered surplus property. Consider the authorization to declare vehicles as surplus property for the Marshall Police Department. Consider the authorization to declare bicycles as surplus property for Marshall Police Department. And then finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for a purpose of a separate discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Approve.
Steve, seconded by Russ. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda item number 12 is the update on the, on the Aquatic Center. Sharon, I'll turn to you on this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. We did include on tonight's agenda the Aquatic Center update. As most of you are aware, the legislature did adjourn without approval of omnibus tax legislation, and we were included in that, and it would have provided sales tax authorization to be put forward on a referendum in November if, if the legislature did approve it. So, we are, did have a discussion with Baker Tilly on financing and funding for an aquatic center without sales tax, and it's quite challenging without having sales tax authorization. And so, we did want to just inform the council that we believe, staff, and I know the mayor was included as well, that if we do not get special legislation, a special session, and the special legislation that authorized sales tax, this would indicate or mean that likely the Aquatic Center project would be delayed by two years. You can only have a referendum, as our understanding under current law, at a general November election, which would then mean November of 2024. We did include, Mr. Mayor and council, on tonight's presentation, our lobbyist from Flaherty and Hood, Marty Seifert, who has been working with our legislators, including Senator Daines and Representative Swedensky, who did help us get us to this point, so very appreciative of them and their work. And if he is on via Zoom, I can certainly turn it over to him, and he can provide some comments legislatively on where we're at and future potential strategies.
I am on. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, Marty. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Sharon, appreciate working with Marshall, and I, I know that the mayor and administrator probably got tired of me emailing and texting them at all hours of the day and night, but that's kind of how the legislature works. We had somewhat of a challenge starting out with the process, just getting the legislation to the point where our local legislators, particularly Representative Swedensky, were comfortable with doing it. I do want to thank members of the council and the community, the Chamber of Commerce, and regular citizens for weighing in on how important the Aquatic Center project was. They, they did introduce the bill. We got through the hearings in the House and Senate. I do want to thank the mayor for providing the testimony for the city of Marshall. It received favorable approval, and the Property Tax Committee of the House, the Tax Committee of the Senate, got forwarded to the regular tax committees, which approved the Marshall legislation, moved it into the omnibus tax bill, moved it to the floor of the House and Senate, where it passed as part of the package of a variety of tax changes. And then went to conference committee, where we were included in both the House and Senate bills, and they have one unified bill at conference committee, of which I monitored, and, you know, they're up till midnight and back in at 8:00 AM and so forth. So, we, we made sure that got through the legislative process in the conference committee. We were identical in both the House and the Senate, and it was adopted by the House and Senate Conference Committee and forwarded to the floor. But the tax bill is a House bill, because the Constitution requires that all bills relating to revenue be originated in the House of Representatives. The House never brought the bill up for passage. So, we were included in all of the different extraneous tax issues. Omnibus tax bill didn't get brought up, so the legislature adjourned. The only finance bills they passed actually were the replenishment of the UI trust fund from COVID, the agriculture and housing omnibus bill, and the legacy or LCCMR bill. The other nine finance bills were left on the table and not passed, as Sharon mentioned. So, some of you maybe saw in the Star Tribune, there was a listing of all the cities that had local option sales taxes. Almost all of us got in the final bill, and we're not, you know, given the final nod by the House and Senate after all the enormous hours we put in. It is extremely frustrating. We got to the one-yard line, but it looks like it is unlikely they're going to have a special session. That's just my read on things. I could be wrong. In all of the cities that, you know, we've got probably two dozen counties and cities going through this process right now, trying to decide if they want to try next session for, for this issue, which means it would get punted to the voters in 2024, or are they going to try to wait it out, or are they going to try a different mechanism and rely on their general fund, or a combination where they start the process and explain to the residents that, you know, we're going to have a sales tax vote in '24 to relieve property taxes. So, you're not the only community going through this. There's a lot of communities having this discussion right now. So, that's kind of where we're at, and I can, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Marty, and I'd also say thank you for your diligence and your efforts and your really good legislative work on this. So, we do appreciate your service. Open up for questions.
It's just, I don't have a question, I have a comment. It's extraordinarily frustrating, as everybody knows, and to punt it down. We look at being fiscally conservative, and we, we've talked about this, we're dumping 15,000 gallons of heated, treated water into the Redwood River a day. Certainly, the funds and the EPA have got to have weigh on that. When the state government does this kind of stuff, not only to Marshall, but to other communities, I mean, come on. It's just ridiculous. Just ridiculous. And so, for us, I think we're stuck to be fiscally responsible, especially with everything going. That pool is a great asset. Not only a great asset to Marshall, it's a great asset to the community. It's a great asset for CVB, for visitors. It's a great asset. But to put it out to a general tax fund, I don't know if it'll, I, I know it won't pass unless we can sell it, and then you go to legislature in '24 and get relief, but that's a gamble, because who knows what'll happen at that in '24? So, I don't, I don't, I'm really worried about it, guys. I don't know if I can support it going forward on tax bills.
Marty, quick, or quick lesson in civics, Marty. So, where, who needed to pull the trigger on this to get it on the floor?
For the House, I mean, it's the Speaker of the House and the Rules Committee decide what goes to the floor. So, I mean, they, they were waiting for the Senate to pass spending bills, and the Senate was waiting for the House to pass the tax bill. They didn't finish human services. They didn't finish judiciary. They had arguments over, should we make carjacking a specific crime or not? Should we enhance penalties or not? And they just couldn't come to an agreement on all the spending bills. And so, the House kind of said, if we don't get all the spending bills, no tax bill. And the Senate said, if we don't get the tax bill, then we're not sending, you know, spending bills. And so, because there was a logjam, and the tax bill was done. We were in it. It was ready to roll. It was enrolled and grossed, signed by majority of both, both houses. There were members of the conference. So, the tax bill was ready to roll. It was being held up because of the other, the other bills, and they unfortunately linked them together.
Sure.
And so, it's, it's very frustrating. I think the mayor and Sharon know how much work we put into this. It was a bumpy road. I'm not going to, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. It was extremely bumpy.
Right.
You know, so, I mean, we landed the plane in the, in the tax bill, but we just, you know, there's only so much lobbyists can do, and then at that point, the legislature has to have the will to get these bills to the floor for a vote. There is no doubt, my mind, had that bill been brought to the floor, it would have passed with a gigantic majority.
Sure. And, and yeah, and thank you, Marty, again, for all the work you did there, and, and our legislators that, that really helped push this forward for us. Who would call the special session? That's the governor, right?
Yeah, only the governor has the sole authority to call for a special session. You know, we do have some of our cities that are going to be passing resolutions here in the coming weeks, asking the governor to call a special session for the tax bill. They're remaining silent on the other bills because they don't want to get into the politics of that.
Right.
But you may want to, it's just a recommendation I have. You may want to consider that, you know, just a simple thing to send to his office and then carbon the Speaker of the House and the Senate Majority Leader. It's just your, your voice that you have as a local government, because you're trying to do what you can do, and you can carbon copy Senator Daines, Representative Swedensky, although they don't have a say in the special session per se, but they should be informed what you guys are thinking.
Perfect. Thank you. And I just, I'm not a good rip, lip reader, but I think the mayor just indicated to me that he's got this, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
I did submit that the day after the session, and so, on behalf of the city, yes.
Marty, I have a question. Does the special session has to be called for a certain date, like sometime in August to get this on the ballot in November? We're just out of luck for two years anyway, correct?
Well, they do ballot preparation for the general election. Well, they do ballot preparation for the general election after the primary. The primary is August 9th. And then the Secretary of State and the county auditors work together for ballot preparation that has to be ready in time for the county to do mail-in ballots for the townships and the small cities that have elected to do mail-in ballots. And that is usually, you know, end of September, I think, they start mail-in ballots. So if they don't have a special session, I would say by the end of August. They may allow a special ballot to be printed for Marshall residents only, that we would have in Ward 1, 2, and 3. But I, you know, that might require special legislation. I'm not sure. Once ballots are prepared for the general election for governor and Congress and so forth, they probably have to, we'd have to add a provision. If they had a special session, for example, in September, we'd probably have to have a provision for a special ballot that we'd have to insert in the bill, which I can prepare, and I don't think would be considered controversial at all.
Perfect. Marty, thank you for the civics walk. I really appreciate that.
Happy to help.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll turn it back to you, Sharon.
And I know that since we have the former auditor here, I don't know if you wanted to comment a little bit on ballot timing?
Sure. According to the Secretary of State's office, we would need to provide written notice with the ballot language to the county by Friday, August 26th. They can actually start organizing ballots as of August 16th already, but the 26th is a drop-dead date to have anything to make the ballots for the general election.
Thank you. Anything else, Sharon?
I just want to add also that we did include a FAQ document, something that we want to get out to the public, just in case there's questions on what the status is. We do include a little section in there about what's the current status, and our language there is that, you know, due to the legislature adjourning, that it looks like we're delayed or in a holding pattern right now with the Aquatic Center. So I just wanted to make sure that the council is aware of, we might do some media promotion on kind of where we're at with the Aquatic Center, just because as the pool opens, we get a lot of questions, and the community is kind of asking the status as well.
When we send that out, can we ask people to send a letter to the governor, asking him for a special session?
I'm going to defer that to Marty and see what he believes would be effective in terms of public participation in requesting a special session.
I think in the "How can I get involved?" section on the FAQ that you have, it's on the bottom right of your screen right now. I think you could put contact information. You always want to avoid the city expending dollars on ballot questions, and usually the school districts get in more trouble than the local governments on the city and county side. But you might want to say, if you are interested in this issue, you could send, you know, an email or call the governor requesting a special session at this number. In this case, less is more, but adding a sentence like that in the "How can I get involved?" section, I think, would be appropriate.
Perfect.
The other point, as we close this agenda item out, is, you know, we do have a pool that is fully utilized, and it's 95 degrees today, it's busy. We are at risk of some failure, and thanks to our park staff or maintenance staff at the pool, they're keeping it going, and that has taken a lot of extra attention on their part.
We solicited maybe some special marketing from Flex Seal or somebody like that, where we could maybe make a glass boat? We could have like a semi-load of that stuff available if we had a quick line and thing. It works underwater.
Okay. Anything else on this? If not, I'll move us along then to the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item Number 13. This will be the presentation of the 2021 Audit Report. I'll start with Sharon, and then you can involve EJ as you want.
Yes. As we know, 2021 into 2022 is a transition with our finance department, so EJ may be caught kind of the last end of this, but our Finance Director, Carla Drown, who's been the lead working on the 2021 audit with our contracted auditors, has provided leadership in this area. And we do have our auditors via Zoom tonight, and they are going to do a presentation of their materials, and Carla or EJ or myself, to the best of my ability anyway, can answer any follow-up questions you may have.
Okay, very good.
Nancy, if you'd like to introduce yourself, feel free, and then go, you have the floor.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am Nancy Schulzenberg, the Partner in Charge of the Engagement for the Audit of the City of Marshall for the year ended December 31st, 2021. And I do have a PowerPoint presentation that highlights some of the information that is included in both the financial statements and the communication letter that we issue. So starting out on the next slide, we talk about the components of the audit. So we have several formal letters that we issue as your auditors, and the first one is the Independent Auditor's Report that is housed in the front of the financial statements. And that includes the opinion, and the opinion on the financial statements is the most important part of our audit. And what we're issuing for the City of Marshall is an unmodified opinion, which is the best that we, as your auditors, can offer to the city, and it does provide some reasonable assurance that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects based on the results of our audit. So it is a clean opinion, if you will. And then in addition to that opinion lever, we have a report in accordance with government auditing standards. So because of some of the funding that you receive as a city, we are required to follow these standards, and they are in addition to the generally accepted auditing standards that all auditors follow. And what this means is that we take a closer look at internal control and also compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, grants, other matters. And based on the work related to those standards, we had no findings this year, so no internal control findings that were put in writing, and also no compliance findings. So congratulations on that. And then, because the city did receive more than $750,000 in federal funding, we were required to perform what is called a single audit, and that is in accordance with the uniform guidance that is issued by the federal government. And we did test the capitalization grants for the Clean Water State Revolving Funds or the PFA Funds, if that's a more familiar term. And related to that, we are issuing an unmodified opinion on compliance, and we also had no internal control findings related to that compliance, so another clean report. And then our last official report is on the results of our testing for Minnesota legal compliance. So annually, the Office of the State Auditor provides us the specific statutes that they'd like us to look at as they relate to accounting matters, covers seven broad categories of Minnesota state statutes, and based on our work there, we also had no findings, so another clean report. So all clean reports, no written findings for the city for this year. And then we have some required communication housed in that communications letter. Those are things that our standards require us to put in writing to all of you. Talks a little bit about responsibilities for the audit, talks about those government auditing standards, the uniform guidance, includes some discussion about estimates that are used, talks about the communication that happens. It would be our tool if we had any disagreements or difficulties we encountered during the audit, or if there was anything significant that we uncovered. Happy to report that nothing in that section strays from our standard language. So a clean bill of health, if you will, related to the required communication. And then finally, we have financial analysis, which is what I'm going to cover tonight. Moving on then to the numbers, we've got a few slides to take a look at your general fund, because this is the most significant operating fund for the governmental activities of the city. So this chart takes a look at your revenues, expenditures, some other transfers primarily, and then the net change in fund balance. So for 2021, very high level revenues were up and expenditures were up. And we'll take a look at the details of both of those in the coming slides. Expenditures did outpace the revenues this year, so your fund balance decreased by about $413,000 for the year. And when we look at your ending fund balance, you have just under $7 million in the general fund, and just under $6 million is unrestricted or available for future spending. I don't have a slide that has those numbers on it, sorry. But when we look at that compared to your fund balance policy, you have outlined a minimum of five months of next year's budget to be in that unassigned fund balance, and at the end of the year at 5.7 months. So you are in compliance with the policy that you have set for yourself. So the slide that we're looking at here is the same revenue and expenditure information, just in a graphical format for ease of viewing the five years that we present. And you can see 2018 through 2021, pretty consistent, pretty consistent level of both revenues and expenditures in the general fund. And to the details of those numbers, starting with the revenues, as I mentioned, they were up. It was about $337,000 or 2.8%. So again, you can see the consistency for the last four years. And when we look at the categories of revenue, there are some fluctuations. So first of all, your charges for services, which is the gray on the top part of the bar, increased about $106,000, and that had to do with lesser effects of COVID in 2021 versus what you saw in 2020. So you're not back to where you were in 2019, but there was some improvement there. And then a couple sections down on the bar chart is your licenses and permits. That was up about $147,000 related to the building activity that you had going on in the city during the year. The intergovernmental category offsetting those increases actually decreased about $292,000, and that is related to the CARES funding that you received in 2020, offset just a little bit by some increased airport revenues that you received. And then finally, the green portion on the bottom there is your taxes. That did go up about $429,000 related to an increase in the levy. On the opposite side of those revenues, we have your expenditures. Overall, they were up more than the revenues by about 5.4%, and again, some fluctuations between the categories. So if you look at your public safety, that's your largest source of spending in the general fund, which is very typical for the city, cities the size of Marshall. And you can see that number did increase about $214,000 kind of across all of your salary-related costs, so salaries, benefits, insurance, compensated absences, all of those categories increasing. Public Works actually decreased. 2020 had some turnover, some overlapping positions as well, so you had increased costs in 2020. Your Culture and Recreation Program did increase about $236,000, and that had to do with those increased activities related to Park and Rec, some things coming back online after the closures in 2020. And then finally, your capital outlay, which is not typically a significant portion of general fund expenditures, was $328,000 for the year related to land and building acquisition that happened in 2021. The next chart takes a look at those revenues and expenditures that we just discussed, and then compares them to what you had budgeted. So you can see that your original and final budget matched, so there was not a modification there. And then your actual amounts are in the third column from the left-hand side, with the variance being that very last column with the one on the right-hand side. So if we take a look at the variance, and we look at the total revenues, which is about a third of the way from the top, you can see that total revenues were about $243,000 under budget. That's 1.9%, so that's really close to what you had anticipated overall. And the largest variances come in charges for services, so although we talked about that increasing, it didn't increase as much as you had expected, and it's not back to 2019 levels yet. And then also, under budget pretty significantly are your investment earnings, and that has to do with the downturn in the market that we've seen, and that being not anticipated when the budget was put together. So on the expenditure side of things, if you follow that right-hand column down a little further, you can see that those were also under budget, again, about 1.9%, so very close to what you had anticipated. And when we look at the under-budget functions, the general government, public works, and culture and rec, there isn't any one thing that stands out. It was kind of across all categories of expenditures in those departments. And then the one item that is over budget is in that capital outlay line with the $328,000 that was not anticipated in the budget. So very bottom line, you had anticipated a decrease in your fund balance, about $167,000. It did decrease by $413,000, so under budget by $246,000 overall. Moving then to your enterprise operations, starting with your wastewater treatment operations. So revenues, operating revenues, which is the green bar on the right-hand side of each one of these columns, did decrease for the year by about 0.7%, so pretty consistent between 2020 and 2021. The expenses in this fund actually increased with some increased depreciation and also pension expense, so non-cash type items. So overall, that increase was 3.1%. The good news is that the end of the day, the very bottom line there, you'll see that you did still have an operating income for the fund. And when you compare the orange bar and the gray bar, the difference between those two is that depreciation. So depreciation is the non-cash expenditure that correlates with the using up of your assets over their useful life. So you can see that that is significant for this fund, because when we factor that out, the operating income becomes almost $1.9 million. And when we look at the position of this fund, and we compare cash and investments and the restricted and unrestricted net position, you can see that overall, the cash and investments did decrease, and the restricted and unrestricted net position also decreased. And that had to do with some construction related to the wastewater treatment upgrades that happened during 2021. And what's good to note in this chart is that you do have cash and investments and net position to be able to handle those things without issuing significant amounts of debt. Moving then to your liquor store operations. We all know 2020 was a stellar year for liquor store operations across the state, and Marshall being very consistent with that. There was a bit of a decrease in your gross profit for the year, and that just had to do with bars and restaurants opening back up again, so kind of shifting some of that back to more normal operations. Operating expenses in this fund did increase, and so your operating income was a little bit less than 2020, but ended at $964,000. This fund was able to transfer out about $895,000 to other funds to help the operations of the city. And even with that transfer, if we look at the position of this fund, you can see that both cash and investments and restricted and unrestricted net position did decrease, but those decreases were small, $14,000 in the cash and investments and $79,000 in the restricted and unrestricted net position. Well, healthy operations with the liquor store. And then finally, your surface water management operations, again, pretty consistent with the previous year when we look at the operating revenues. Operating expenses were up again, related to depreciation, and then also some non-capital project costs included there. So overall, operating income of about $45,000 in this fund, and significant depreciation here as well, factoring that out, the operating income at $687,000. And then one last chart for that fund, taking a look at the position, and you can see that cash and investments did decrease with the costs that were going on there, but your restricted and unrestricted net position increased by $605,000, so a solid position at the end of the year in this fund as well. And then the last two charts take a look at revenue and expenditures per capita for your governmental funds. And we have 2020 comparative informations for different-sized cities, and then we have City of Marshall for 2019, 2020, and 2021. So if you look at the year that we can compare, and you look at the two middle columns on each side of this chart, you can see that statewide average for revenues is $1,214 per capita, and for Marshall, it's $1,603. The biggest variance is coming in property taxes, and then also the intergovernmental revenues category. And because we see those amounts higher on the revenues, you would expect in the expenditures as well, which is exactly what we have here. So if you look at the current, those are kind of the operating items for the city. Total average for the state, for cities of your size, $770,000. Your number for 2020, $1,203,000. Biggest variance is here in public works, and then also Parks and Recreation being higher than statewide averages. And then if we look at capital outlay, that one is over as well as your debt service. So it just has to do with some of the things that you're providing to the residents of your city. That is what I have. Any questions?
We'll open up for questions. Sharon, do you want to, did you have?
I have a question for Nancy, but I can wait until the council gets their opportunity.
Nancy, you may want to point out for the audience too, the intergovernmental revenue, what makes that up, and in particular, our payment and lower taxes from Marshall Municipal Utilities.
So the intergovernmental revenues related to the governmental activities, which is what we were looking at in those per capita charts, is primarily state and federal funds that you receive. So those didn't include anything other than governmental activities, so general funds, special revenue funds, debt service, capital project funds.
John?
Just a question, Nancy, on the, do you see anything coming ahead in the government audit standards that we need to be aware of that could be a surprise?
It shouldn't be a surprise. We've been talking about it for a lot of years, because all of the standards got delayed. So there are some new standards, the most significant being related to leases. So in the past, you had operating leases and capital leases, and the capital leases were reported. and the capital leases were recorded in the financial statements as an asset and a piece of debt. The new standards require us as your auditors to look at all the leases and for the city to record an intangible right to use an asset. So if you have what was typically an operating lease, but it's long-term, more than 12 months, you'll be recording an asset and a liability related to that. So similar to a purchase rather than a lease. That makes sense.
Thank you. Other questions? If not, thank you to the audit team and thank you Nancy for your presentation. The, I would entertain a motion to accept and approve the 2021 year-end audit.
I'll move second.
By John, second, by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. Motion passes.
Just for the record, that was actually seconded by Jim.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we'll note that, so. We'll move then to agenda item number 14. This is the Bird Scooter Program. The operational contract is up for renewal. Sharon, I'll turn to you first on this.
Yes, we have been in communication with Bird, who helps the city implement the Bird Scooter Program. It is their scooters and they're the ones who handle the promotion and management of them. It is not a city-run entity in any fashion. However, we do have an existing memorandum of understanding with them and it actually expired at the end of May. And so we've been in discussions with them about a renewal or an extension of this memorandum of understanding. It has been contained in your council packet. And we also do have representatives from Bird Scooter, I believe via Zoom. If they're not here yet, I may have to contact them. So let me, let me do that here as we, as we wait. So Ryan, they should be coming on here shortly. I thought the audit was going to take longer. I apologize.
Well, as we wait for them, can we comment on that?
Yeah, I, yes, I was going to ask a question, but I was going to ask a question. I can save it for later on the audit. I can contact Nancy later, but so.
The, I read through this and I know there's issues with the scooters going downtown at a quicker pace. I think, and I told you Sharon, I think this is a good compromise for what they were having. It's, you know, like I said, I travel a lot and you see these throughout all communities. Eliminating from our community, we're going to, I would believe, be taking a step back. I think that this is a good compromise to work with Bird and to keep them in our community and keep them usable.
Sharon, do you want to summarize the changes that are recommended in the usage and speed?
We did have conversations with them and we requested that on Main Street, the usage of the scooters be reduced to 10 miles per hour. We wanted Memorial Park excluded, which they did do. They reduced the speed in our other city parks down to 10 miles per hour. We had a request from the school district to geofence, I think I got the right term, from their property. They did look at maps via Google, I believe, and believe that they did restrict those areas. And we did comment to Bird the amount of scooters on Main Street. They can't be on sidewalks and it's a little different traffic pattern here on Main Street than some of our side streets and different locations of them. And they did, did make some adjustments there as well, so. And are they on yet? Okay.
Just a comment, are you done Sharon?
Yes, I am.
So initially, when this, the concerns came up, Sharon and I did talk quite a bit about this and Jim and I also, and then consequently, some conversations in process. And I appreciate the effort that's made to, to try to address the concerns. I know initially it wasn't very well received, but I appreciate the fact that the people that represent and work with the Bird program actually put this in place. And I just want to say that none of this is, is cast in stone. I mean, it's an agreement that they have to operate a service within the community. There's expectations of how that works and there's always input and changes, but I do appreciate this. And then it's also, responsibility goes to the people that are riding them and the people that are coaching, for lack of a better term, or parenting, the people that are riding them to talk about courtesies and behaviors. And there is a way to track these. You know, if people think that they're using them anonymously, that they can't be tracked for bad behavior. That's not true either. So I think they are an asset when properly used, like anything else. It can be a valuable tool until it's misused. A good hammer for building a house does a lot of damage to the car if it's misused. So I appreciate the service and I really appreciate the measures they're taking to try to be a better partner in the community.
I think we have the representative from Bird online now. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, hello everyone. My name is Kylie Floodman. I am the account manager for Marshall on the Bird side of things. So I jumped in a little bit into the introduction apologies, but I think that was exactly it. We are really dedicated to partnering with our cities because I think when all of our goals are aligned here, both on the resident's behalf, our behalf and the city's behalf, it really is a great program to provide not only just additional transportation, but also really help make a positive impact. Obviously, we are a very mission-driven company with climate change. So I think as a whole, we've been working with Sharon and Lauren to make some measures to address some of the concerns that we've been seeing and also continue to have these measures in place moving forward as we renew and hopefully, you know, provide another year with Marshall. So I have presented, or I have created a small presentation just to kind of kick things off. Happy to dive into that and then do a Q and A. Or if we'd just like to do a Q and A, we can do that as well. I'm open to whatever the city feels is best.
Or if you want to do your short presentation.
All right, let me see if I can share my screen here. So I'm not able to share. Is it okay? I'm not sure who is running it, but it's you Sharon.
See if we can make that change so you can share.
I think right now EJ's screen is sharing and then.
Okay, give us a moment. I think we can figure it out, so.
Bunch enough buttons, we'll find it.
No worries. Awesome. Perfect. Thank you. All right, is everyone seeing my screen okay?
Yes.
I just wanted to, for those who have not seen it yet, just give a little bit of an overview of how our operations were last year, just the ridership that we saw and the adoption there, as well as, you know, just kick off some of the methods that we've done in the past couple of weeks with working with Sharon, Lauren and a couple other members of the city. And then we can do a Q and A and I can answer any questions that you may have and go from there. So in 2021, here's just a quick snapshot of our program in Marshall. As you can see, we had 7,000 rides and we only launched in July. So saw a great community adoption there, a lot of people actually utilizing the service and also seeing all the impact there that we've had, not only just on mileage and distance traveled from use, but also CO2 that was saved just in the city of Marshall alone. And then below, you're seeing the heat map there of where rides were generally ending, which I feel this is, you know, a little bit of a segue into some of the methods that we all be speaking about. Obviously, downtown of Marshall is a massive destination for people trying to ride scooters from the outside of town into that central area. So, but that said, we do see ridership all across the city, which is, you know, our goal. So not only is this a method for people to use on the weekends or driving into downtown businesses, but also commuting, getting across to different areas of town and utilizing in that fashion. So on our end, these are great numbers to see. The program has been really successful so far, which is why we're very excited to hopefully continue on and be a partner to Marshall. So looking at last year, a couple of things that we've done and we do have the capacity to do, you know, as we move forward, is rider education and in-app messaging. So this was just an example of one of the messages that we pushed out to our Marshall riders. So a lot of what we do is just general reminders of proper riding etiquette. I think a big piece of all of our programs is reminding riders of how to ride, how to be a responsible rider and responsible member of the community, right? So reminding of the general rules that we have in place, age requirements, staying off the sidewalk, parking properly. And then on the right-hand side is just a general overview of what we've done as a company to just further keep progressing and further keep these programs beneficial. So looking forward into 2022, I know the Main Street was a major concern. I'm sure something that we'll be speaking about after this. But what we've done, it's been around for about two and a half weeks now, is implemented a slow zone from Seventh all the way to Memorial Park. And then on the right-hand side, as you can see, we also went ahead and completely made Memorial Park a no-ride, no-park zone. And then what we've done as well, a couple of the city parks that have been sent my way, as well as the Marshall School District, we have also gone ahead and made the parks slow zones and the city school district, no-ride, no-park. So this is an example of just some of the capabilities that we do have. And I think on our end, what we love to do is have a conversation, right? And help educate on both of our ends. So finding out the best solution that still addresses the concerns that we're seeing, but also makes it a great ridership experience, still allows that accessibility for riders. So these are all measures that we have in place currently and have, you know, no desire obviously to take away. So if you were to open your app or a rider were to go on right now, you would see this active in Marshall. So I said it was pretty short, so just the general overview of last year and looking forward to this year. And I know you all have had discussions already about the MOU extension and have, to my understanding, come to a general conclusion there. But I know there's probably a lot of questions. If there's anything I can answer or anything you have for me, we'd love to open it up to you all.
Okay, thank you. We'll open up for questions. John and Russ.
Okay, just first comment, just kind of a thank you to see the reduced speeds. Little concerned you had a 10 mile an hour if you run a trail or something that's pretty fast as compared to even a jogger, which certainly isn't me. But, you know, getting, you know, walking pace, that's kind of a precaution there. The question I have is typically in the, I would say uncommon areas, like say residential area, whatever, how long, is there a time consideration as far as how long a scooter sits there before it gets picked up? Or is there anything on that end of it? Because I've noticed some scooters seem to remain in like, say, residential areas for a fair amount of time.
Yeah, definitely. Well, so I'll address both your pieces there. Thank you. So on the trail side of things, we do generally, a lot of times we equate our program honestly to cyclists. And I know at first that might not seem reasonable, but the average cyclist does go between 15 and 20 miles an hour, depending on if it's more of a leisurely cycle or, you know, a little bit more for fitness. So 10 miles an hour, a lot of times we find would actually be less than, you know, what your average cyclist would be going. That said, we do find 10 miles an hour keeps, so you can't zoom past someone completely, right? But it's still being able to keep up with other flows of traffic there. And then in terms of the neighborhood parking and accessibility there, so our fleet managers do have data that they're looking at and that our engagement managers, who manage our fleet managers, are looking at on generally a daily basis, right? So what we do want is to find that balance between keeping, you know, if a ride was ended in a residential area, that means someone took it home, right? So someone did want to have that ride and that accessibility there. So making sure we still have birds in those more outskirts areas if people wanted to take it from their home into downtown or to another area of town, while also, you know, making sure we are still rebalancing them. So generally, our fleet managers every couple of days are doing an overall sweep to rebalance and bring scooters back to areas of high demand. That said, they likely will leave some out in those random areas of neighborhoods that they were left in with the thought process that someone, you know, did take it downtown to their home and likely might want to open up the app and see a bird, you know, within a couple of blocks from their home or whatever it may be to take it to their next location. With that, we do have methods available for people to report birds. So if it is something that's parked in front of their home that they're not comfortable with or they want it moved, we do have methods to actually create a ticket that will go directly to the fleet manager, myself and our operations team. And of course, if we receive that request, we will have that, we will have that bird moved.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Russ?
Oh, go ahead.
John?
Can I just add too, just because I do run, I'm probably at 6 miles per hour and Dr. Meister's closer to 10, probably.
I wish.
It's not too far off, but.
And 20 miles an hour on a bike.
I will say that on a bike, for me, 20 miles is quick, but that's usually what I'm at, is about 18 to 22 on a bike.
You're probably 30 to 40.
I'm probably, I'm probably personally closer to 15, but I know there's people out there that are, that are pretty speedy, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kylie, you addressed a couple of the concerns I had regarding safety education already, so thank you for that. And I, I agree with my fellow council members regarding birds being good for our community and for the users. But one of the things in this agreement, it says users of stand-up electric scooters shall be 18 years, 18 or older and who, stand-up electric scooters who violate these provisions may be enforced by Marshall, consistent with the enforcement for bicyclists. So are you telling us that we can have the director of public safety and his staff stop these birds, confiscate these birds and write a ticket to somebody that's under 18 or what?
Yeah, so when anybody does sign up for, to be a bird user, there is obviously a general agreement that, you know, includes all the fine print. But outside of the fine print, there is a separate area that does certify that you are of age to ride a bird and that you can be subject to fine or, or be reported if you are, yeah, thank you, if you are under 18 and operating a bird. So with that, that's just general when you do sign up. A lot of times with cities, if they are seeing an increase of underage riders, that's when we push out, you know, extra education to our riders as they start a ride. As a reminder, you can be subject to a fine. Or we could also violate terminate users if we see this as well. So again, extra education. On top of that, we do leave it up to our city partners. So every city really is different in terms of if they are seeing a lot of underage riding or not. Sometimes it just depends on, you know, if the parents, unfortunately, given their, their, their child, their credit card to sign up and kind of let them do that. But if the city does feel they want to actually take legal action, of course, that is up to you the same way that if someone was breaking any other law, we leave it up to your jurisdiction.
So did I hear you correct in saying that if I have a child that's underage and they get picked up on the bird a couple of times, we could prohibit them from riding again for 30 days? Or did I hear that right?
Correct, yes. I think I might have jumped in kind of as someone was speaking about our capabilities there. So the data that we share with our cities that you have access to is obviously redacted from our users' information, just, you know, to protect their privacy. That said, we do have the capabilities to dig in. So if we are seeing repeat offenders and especially, you know, if it were to relate to any sort of negligence on the rider's end, we can dig into who that rider was. And we have those capabilities to actually ban a user. We try to obviously refrain against that. But if it becomes to the point where we're seeing repeat misuse of a bird or unsafe riding or underage riding of an individual user, we do have the capabilities to do that. we do have the capabilities to do that. Um, obviously, we have a trust and safety team on our end that would handle that, again, to protect our riders', um, privacy as a whole, that we have the capability to dig in deeper if we need to.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just want to add that our city attorney did bring up, um, this age provision, and he can comment on what state law says. And we refrained, staff refrained about putting in the MOU amendment the state reference because it's age 12. And if Bird wants to have a higher restriction, meaning 18 and above, um, you know, the staff is recommending to keep it at 18 and above for Bird. So, um, if Bird wants to, to enforce a more stringent age, I think our staff recommendations that they do that. But I'll defer to the city attorney on the statute and the age limit.
It is, in the criminal statute, 169.225, if you're 12 years of age or older, you are allowed to operate a stand-up scooter in the state of Minnesota. You are required to wear, wear a headgear, helmet if you're less than 18. If you're 12 to, you know, 18, you're supposed to wear a helmet. But it is not against the law to operate at age 12 and older. But, so it's, it's not a criminal issue if you're under 18. It may become a civil enforcement issue, contractual issue, but it's not, that, that doesn't give a reason for the police officer to stop us, somebody at age 12.
And that's a question I should ask. That's more of a bird issue then if they're over 12 than a city issue.
Correct.
Because state law, the 13-year-old can go out and, and we have no right to stop because he's within bounds of the state law.
They have to wear the helmet. Bar within rounds, bounds if they don't wear a helmet. And I will tell you personally, kids don't wear helmets.
Well, I, I know that, there's a point that, and I know Jim Marshall is sitting here, but there's a point that our, we gotta let parents teach their children. Our police can't stop for helmets either. That, that's a parenting, more than anything, yes.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions for the Bird representative?
I think, uh, Mr. Mayor, I like, I like the memorandum of understanding. I like the rules. I think they're perfect and satisfies a lot of the issues. And we just have to, if somebody's on a bird, they just have to learn that this is just common sense, good things. I mean, it'd be like you and I riding our bikes down the, down the sidewalk. We wouldn't do it because it's dangerous for us. It's dangerous for pedestrians. It's dangerous for customers coming in and out of things. But you just have to, you know, no.
Sorry.
In a lot of cities, like in Omaha, there's zones that are completely forbidden. You, I tried, we were down, it was a major street downtown and there's just too much foot traffic and the bird, I went down it and all of a sudden I didn't know it. It just quit working. So I picked it up and walked down to where I could go again.
Any other input?
Well, the only other input I'd put in is, is we gotta educate birds. And I will say it's the public and, and it wasn't somebody on the bird, but I was watching a young girl today biking, reading her cell phone.
Right.
And I just, well, I can hardly...
Training for having a hot Mustang like somebody else I know on the text and drive.
I mean, it's no comment on that. It's just we got, as, as public walk-in, we have to pay attention to, we, to all people out there. There's bikers and walkers. And it's illegal to text and drive, so I don't think anybody on this council would ever do that.
But there's also, we have to be aware of all sorts of new technology. I have seen a skateboard in town with a guy who's riding it, has a helmet. He's in the tuck position. He's going 45 miles an hour. There is no question. And he blew through a stop sign the other day. And I'm thinking, you know, he's a motorized vehicle, period. He is motorized vehicle. If I blow through a stop sign on my bicycle, Jim's driving, he can stop me. I mean, I am, I'm a vehicle. You can get stopped. You can get ticketed. That's just common sense, you know? And if he says, well, I'm, I'm not on a car, it doesn't matter. You're on a motorized vehicle, dude.
So you have the modified contract in front of us with the restrictions that, um, have been requested by staff and Bird has incorporated that. Should I be accepted?
Good.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Steve. Discussion on that motion?
Mr. Mayor, just one typographical correction. On the last page, we've got the city's address at 1651 Victory Drive.
We moved.
You want to maybe change that? Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Good catch. Any other discussion on the motion?
Actually, so we'll, we'll make sure that that's corrected.
Make sure that's changed, yes, of course.
We just want to add, I know the city attorney mentioned this a little bit, it does give us the right to terminate, you know, 30 days notice. So if there is issues, again, we'll bring it forward. And if somehow we can't come to resolution, it, we have the leverage there to work with, uh, with the Bird company, so.
Any other discussion on the motion? Not all.
Would it make, Mr. Mayor, would it make sense to hear from any of the members in the audience? Chad sitting in the back, regarding?
Chad, do you, do you want to speak to this issue? Then you'll need to come to the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, one thing that I'd just comment on is it is a great asset to the community. And after hearing that there are no, uh, ride zones with the school and stuff like that, I would think if a person could shut down Main Street, right down Main Street, that would be really safe for our community, if that's something that we could do. Um, mu, some of you know that, uh, I've shared a video with, uh, some very near misses, um, people coming out the front door and a scooter zipping by. Reduced speeds are a good thing, but I think if we could control something and make it safer for everyone, I think that'd be a good thing to do. Be proactive.
Yeah, this is a first step. If this works, it works. And if it doesn't, there'll be more restrictions.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that forward. One thing, right after the meeting that we discussed that we walked outside and Bird was still parked out, and they have it right on the scooter. It's actually riveted to the scooter, no riding on sidewalks.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, I appreciate those efforts too, so. Thank you. Yep. Thanks, Chad.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, I'll move us to a vote. Want to close the voting? EJ, you gonna bring that up, back up on the screen?
He's gonna keep it secret. We're gonna run a lot of it. Make some money for the Aquatic Center. No pressure.
And the motion passes. Thank you. And, uh, thank you to the Bird representative too.
Appreciate your time.
We'll move then to Agenda I of number 15. This is a request for conditional use permit, uh, for Hope Harbor at, uh, 20, 219 North High Street. Um, this was considered by the Planning Commission. I'll make some comments about that after Ilya's presentation. Ilya?
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is a request by Hope Harbor for condition use permit to have eight people in the residential facility. Right now they have six and six is permitted used by the ordinance. Actually, it's a statutory requirement. But over six requires a condition use permit, so they apply for the condition use permit. Uh, Steph thought that the major concern may be parking and that was, uh, supported by the people who came and talked about it during Planning Commission meeting. We're talking about parking, uh, problems. So the condition, the fourth condition that is attached to the, uh, uh, this, uh, condition use permit is, uh, attempting to take care of the parking. So it limits the, uh, staff and volunteers to park only on their property of the street. And, uh, it, uh, asks for all visitors to park only within their property on their side of the street. And the other first, the first three conditions are standard conditions. It always applies to, uh, all condition use permits. Just basically saying that they should have to comply with all the regulations, applicable regulations.
Okay. Thank you, Ilya. Um, I was president at the Planning Commission and this was, there was a couple of neighbors that were there and the Planning Commission heard their concerns and the results of the conditions are incorporated and really satisfied their concerns. There's, um, the parking, they have some parking in the rear of the, um, house. They have some parking adjacent to their property in front. They also have parking in the driveway. And, um, they've also had contact with neighboring churches where some of the staff can park. Um, and they also plan to do some education with the families who are visiting. They're really, there is not a, a question about the, the use. It's more of the visitors there that are parking. And they'll do some education with the families that would be, be visiting to be, make sure that they're respectful of the parking. Ilya, I think that pretty much covered it.
Correct, yeah.
So questions?
I have a question. And conditional use permits go with the property now forever, correct? So would it be more apt to do this as an interim?
Uh, that's a, uh, uh, use, the condition use permit is listed in the ordinance.
It is, okay.
So we have to do, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, that's the recommendation from the Planning Commission.
I move approval of the recommendation.
Excuse me, I, I have some wording that I, I don't like in this and I would like to do a little word smithing. I don't know who determines and what is a negative impact. Who determines a negative impact which could violate the conditional use permit? Said you can't do anything to cause or create a negative impact. And so I think, I think some of that language should be stricken. And I don't know what future properties mean. We're not creating any more property. It's the existing adjacent properties. And what's future properties? I'd like to restrict that. And on the bottom, I said their side of the street. I think that should say the odd-numbered side of the street, which is not, I think it just defines it better. I'd like to do a little language changes.
The, so the condition that, uh, the city attorney brought up is a standard that we, you have been using for a very, very long time. So that's why it's here. We didn't really change it. Uh, I don't think we ever use this condition. I mean, obviously, all the, those conditions are there so that if they are broken, we can come back and say that you are violating the conditions. I don't remember any cases when, uh, that was, uh, done. Uh, I assume, again, I don't, no, they're deep into this thing, that future property assumes that at some point, something may be subdivided. So that's why it's, uh, there. But I really don't have any objections about changing those things.
When the, uh, the intent on their side of the street is in front of their property. I mean, that was the discussion at the Planning Commission.
Correct, yeah. So that's, that covers them.
I think it creates some problems myself. Who defines, who defines a negative impact? If I'm the adjacent owner and I find a garb, um, uh, problems clearing snow in the wintertime, is that a negative impact and who defines that? Does the city define negative impact or does the neighbors?
So you're suggesting we...
Just delete that language.
Incorporate this type of language in all of our conditional use permits where it exists.
As long as you comply with zoning ordinance and building code, you're fine. I think it could, that condition could end right there.
Yeah, we could, we could maybe just, uh, instead of just zoning ordinance, maybe all city ordinances, just a general statement of compliance with the city's laws.
But if you do that, then this house could slowly fall into disrepair and still fits into the ordinances. It's now creating a negative impact on the neighbors because it's, but it, it can comply with the ordinances and, uh, the laws of the city. And not be, I mean, we got properties along East Main Street that fit into the ordinances, but Mr. Taylor's wrote about them because he's correct. They're creating a negative impact to the area. So I know what you're saying, Dennis. It's a very gray area.
Yep.
Uh, who decides it? I think that would be, you know, that's a great question, but do you add, creative impact is decided by the, the building department? I don't have an answer. And I know you don't want to get into that either, but I don't have an answer to that. But I know the negative impact I would leave in there because you can mean an ordinance, but still create a negative impact to your neighborhood.
At the end, it will always be decided by the council because only council can withdraw the condition use permit. I mean, it will be probably brought by the neighbors. It will come to the staff who will check that thing. But at the end, it will come to the council.
But I understand your point. I, I, there's no good answer, I don't think.
No.
When you also saw this, when it was presented to the Planning Commission?
So the question that I have on this, and again, I don't want to play hypothetical, I don't want to use kangaroo court, but it almost would be that in, in a number of situations. So if they're complying with the code, I mean, we have nuisance ordinance, there's licensing. I mean, they must carry a license with the state also for what the facility looks like. There's got to be a power higher than us as a, as a building and zoning ordinance on how they operate the facility, what conditions are inside, you know? So by the time it would become something that we would see as, as creating a problem or, um, there's probably a lot more problems than bad siding or, you know, they don't mow the lawn. You know, I, I agree with Dennis. I mean, it, we really put ourselves in kind of really kangaroo court on what, what is an interference or a problem with a neighboring property? You know, did I paint it the wrong color?
Right. And just to be clear, there, there's not a question on the current property or the current...
Right, no, exactly. But I mean, I get the hypothetical piece because, you know, in the perfect or less perfect world, but there's a lot of ways to reach through that. And, I mean, I think it, whether we have that language in or out, the, the language is really pretty, pretty sketchy. But I know it's consistent, but maybe just because it's in everything else doesn't mean it's good.
I believe somewhere in the ordinance, there is wording like that negative impact for the condition use permits.
I, I didn't see it, but I didn't particularly look in this.
Yeah, yeah. I think there is something for, uh, um...
Well, let's just move on with this and we can take a look at all that in the future.
We have two options. One is the city attorney introduced a new idea here tonight. So we have a, an option to just table this so that legal can review the proper language or we can consider the ordinance, um, and make that subject to legal review, which hadn't happened yet.
But we have a motion made and seconded, right? So we have to...
No, we don't have a motion on the table.
Oh, we did.
No. You started it and then Dennis spoke up, so.
I interfered.
Thinking the changes you're suggesting, Dennis, I don't think are substantive to the, you know, the action, uh, trying to figure the right wording of this. Yeah, they're not really changing the results of what we're allowing for the additional people coming in. You're really looking at the wording itself within the ordinance to make it clearer.
Clean up by it.
I guess I would, uh, maybe suggest a, a motion to approve this under the condition of review of the, uh, legal counsel.
Sure. Motion by John is to second that motion.
We did have a motion on the floor from Craig. That one just died because of no second.
No.
Oh, you made the motion, Craig. Craig made the motion and then Dennis stepped in.
Yeah, I do have that Craig made a motion.
Well, I didn't accept that motion, no, because there was no second. Dennis spoke up, so.
Okay. Okay, so you made a motion. Is there a second to your motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jim. Now discussion on that motion.
Can I just ask, would there be a review of case law and why this language might be there? I mean, it isn't just our ordinance and state law. There might be case law interpretation of what negative impact means. To me, this seems like it protects the city. Um, and I'm not trying to say that, you know, we're gonna have to play this out with this particular CUP, but it just seems like we would want to have protections as a city. And wondering if there is case law that may not be identified in statute or our ordinance. I don't know.
That's what a review would determine.
Yes.
Okay. Other discussion on the motion? Now I'll move us to a vote. Want to close the voting? And the motion does pass. Thank you, Ilya.
Thank you.
And thank you. We'll move then to Agenda I of number 16, Consider the Resolution, Um, Authorizing the Execution of the MinDOT Grant Agreement for Taxiway Crack Fill and Seal Code at the Airport. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we do have a, a grant agreement in the packet for the council's consideration. Um, we, we have a $75,000 project at the airport for crack filling. Uh, 70% of that cost is state, 30% is local. Uh, this is included in our airport CIP. The local amount's $22,500. Our intent would be to do most of the, or as much of the work as we can on our own with our own staff and equipment. Uh, there is some crack sealing work that we'll probably get a quote for, for some of the, the larger cracks. Um, if there's any questions, we can try to answer them. Thank you.
Question for Jason? If not, is there a motion?
So move.
Motion by Craig. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda I of number 17, the MPCA Chloride Reduction Grant, the Water Softener Optimization and Rebate Program Presentation. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so we've, we've discussed... So we've, we've discussed this grant with the council a few different times. The last time we were here was on April 12th, I believe, and we received council approval to identify the funds to match the grant locally with local funds. We've got $15,625 of wastewater department funds and the same amount of MMU funds going towards this grant as a match. This gives us $100,000 of actionable funds to use in our community to help reduce chlorides. We did advise the council that we would meet with our partners, Bolton and Mink, who actually hold the grant, the MPCA staff, some folks from the Minnesota Water Quality Association, and eventually all the local contractors. So we've done that. We've held some meetings. We did invite plumbers and water quality companies to a meeting to discuss and give their input. And coming out of that meeting, we've, we've come up with what we think is the program we'd like to administer, at least beginning with these funds. We'd like to offer $50 rebates to have water softeners optimized so someone who's certified through the city can come into your home, make adjustments, and receive a $50 rebate for that work. So that would hopefully make the adjustment of your water softener free or near free. In addition to that, we'd like to offer generally $500 rebates for water softener replacements. They would apply if your water softener is an outdated time-based model that regenerates on a schedule as opposed to regenerating based on water usage. So if you've got one that regenerates on a schedule and it qualifies, you can, you stand to have a $500 rebate or possibly even up to $700 rebate if you install a more efficient unit. So we think that offering a program at the start, at least to see how it goes with these parameters generally gives us the best opportunity to make sure we're getting softeners adjusted and also make sure we're getting rid of the most inefficient equipment. There is a commercial scale that's included in the packet as well for some higher rebates, but I don't think we need to go over that in too much detail unless there's questions. But just want to get councils' concurrence that we're on the right track with this rebate and we'll kind of see how it goes and meet with you going forward as needed.
Any comments, any input? John?
Yeah, a question regarding the, the rebates. You know, we've been working on this for some time, so there's people that have already had adjustments to the water softener and perhaps have replaced it. Are those rebates going to be retroactive to a certain date, showing an invoice or something like that? Or how would you see that being handled?
I think right now we wouldn't be making any retroactive payments. I think the idea is just that if you schedule an appointment with someone and have them come in and optimize, and that's more than just changing the number down to eight grains. It's probably going in and making sure that the salt dosage is correct and it's, it's running as efficiently as possible. So if you have that happen, the contractor can get, can get the rebate funds for going to your home and reviewing as long as they submit some paperwork that we've got. There's different forms that they have to fill out and identify what the softener was set at and, and what they did and, and those, that type of information. So no differentiation about whether it's already been adjusted or not, but I think if a contractor keeps coming in with, you know, units that are already adjusted, we'll probably have to have a conversation about whether we give those rebates.
Yeah, I guess a little, I guess that's a concern I've got is those that have already done it already. You know, are we going to upset a number of people who were good in doing it because we brought our chloride levels down significantly? You know, so there's been a lot of work out there already. But, you know, I know we're trying to clean it up and get there, but I guess that's a concern I've got on. You know, I'm doing, starting a rebate at this point for, and I'm, actually, I'm okay with the 500 that really are getting those softeners replaced because that may have occurred, but it probably isn't as often as people coming in and getting adjustments because I know a number of people that have already had their units and somebody visit them and do the adjustments on their water softeners, so.
I understand that concern. You know, I think that anytime you roll out a rebate program, it's, it's going to be hard. There's going to be people that miss on it because they did the right thing early or whatever it may be, but I, I don't know how we would really defend against that. But we do have $100,000 of actionable funds to put to use and we just have to try to make the impact that we can.
So the water softener plant went online in July of 2021?
Sounds about right, yeah.
Yeah, so you could make it retroactive with providing the proof of payment to a service provider or providing the invoice for the purchase.
So the issue we're going to have is we have $100,000 of actionable funds and if you offered a rebate to everyone in the community of $50 and everyone in the community took you up on that, you'd be well underfunded with what you have for funding. So I think our real goal is to try to get adjustments on the units that haven't been adjusted so we can see reductions in chloride. But as I kind of mentioned, I think if, if someone comes in or a contractor goes out and does an adjustment and an optimization and fills out the paperwork, we're going to try to process those rebates for them. It's, it's just hard to, it's hard to. I think it would be hard to pay out retroactively if your unit's already adjusted. But if you're, if you want it reviewed, maybe I change mine on my own and try to do the right thing and I want to get it reviewed and I call in a contractor, they would get the rebate.
So the question I have, Jason, we are still over our levels where the state wants us to be, correct?
We have a lot of work to do.
So, and I understand the point you guys are trying to do, but this is unfortunately is incentivizing people to get it done who have not done it yet. And sometimes life just is not fair. To be blunt.
Never got a, never got a retroactive automobile rebate.
Not.
These citizens are saving softener salts earlier than the other individuals.
Yes.
Correct.
We appreciate them doing the right thing, right way.
Yes, definitely.
Is there overall concurrence on support of this program as presented?
Yeah, do you need a motion on that?
Give her a motion.
I think.
Can I say something? I, I understand the whole purpose here and I understand doing the right thing, but to incentivize somebody to do the right thing, that's like paying somebody a bonus to not speed. We should be able to figure out a way to punish people who haven't done it. A disincentive, it's a carrot and a stick. Otherwise you, why would anybody do the right thing? If I'm going to do the right thing, why not just wait? Because then somebody will pay me to do it.
Because we don't have an ordinance that says you have to have your softener set at a certain point. Then we're going to doing an ordinance and we're going to have to do an enforcement program that puts staff people in diesel people's basements to be the softener cop. You got a great idea, but I don't know how we'd fulfill it.
Right, and that's, that's the problem.
You know, Stephen, we've been fighting with Sump Pump and Marshall for 30 years and people still pump them into their flood drains and we still have sewer backup because people are not pumping, and that is in the ordinance.
Right.
I mean, unfortunately, there's just, sometimes we have struggles with stuff that people should just do. I agree with you 100%.
Yeah, right. I think what we're hoping to do, you know, we do have these grant funds. Bolton and Mink did secure it. They're working with Worthington and Marshall towards a common goal. You know, this does a lot of good things for us. We're going to be able to track and see if there's some change and if there is and the program's successful and we're, we're handing out money and getting change, we can try to get more, you know.
Yeah, and I think if we look at this, that this is being offered out by the regulator, the person that, the agency that gave us the chloride limits to try to get it in shape. And it's also educating us as a city. So if we do this and it works and we're still having problems after we spend this grant money getting compliance, it tells us that if we invest more money in city initiated grants to get the rest of the people into line, this is a tool that the state is using to educate us as a city on how to get down to the limits that they've assigned us. So, I mean, that's the way I read it.
I guess I would, yeah, just comment, I would look at this very similar to what MMU does for higher efficiency wash machines, refrigerators, freezers or whatever, and incentivize the improvement in the softener. In other words, the keep the 500 bucks. My hangup really is, you know, that $50 incentive to get somebody to adjust it that, you know, many people did already. And just going to spoil in that. So I guess I'd be more inclined to drop out the $50 incentive and push the $500 for replacing the water softener.
It's, we can certainly craft the program in any way that the council desires it to be crafted. I would just hesitate a little bit. I think that there, from our perspective, we do think there's a lot of softeners that are not adjusted and optimized. You know, just from our limited access to people's homes, maybe we are giving them a, handling their sump pump permit and just having a conversation while we're there. And, you know, the number of those conversations and how they go. And we just, we're pretty suspicious that there's quite a few units not yet adjusted. So we think that if we throw out this offer, it's not just for the resident to call. It's to incentivize the water quality companies to get out and advertise and call that, look, this is free. Let us come in and evaluate your unit. Let's see if it's working correctly. If it's outdated, you might qualify for more money. This is going to be free for you. Let us come in and adjust it and optimize it. Let us do that for you, you know? Most people don't look at their softener. The last time I did, I realized it was regenerating at the wrong time of the day. So, you know, I, I had to make a change. Most people just don't look at it. So I, we, we do feel pretty strongly that the optimization is a strong use of the money as well. But we would certainly adjust it in any way that the council wants.
Any other discussion?
The only, the only question I have is, and maybe an alternative theory is to not incentivize the end user. Like you said, the cus, the companies, because who's ultimately losing money by the change?
Lost sale of salt.
Lost sale of salt, bingo. And so if you chase the money, you give, you give Culligan and Echo Water the incentive to go out and do it.
Right.
That, that helps protect them because they're, what's their incentive? They don't want, they don't care. They want people to keep doing this because they're going to, there's no punishment, there's no stick, if you will. They're going to want to sell salt.
From our conversation when we had the water quality companies there, you know, I do think that there's a shared understanding of a need to, to keep things going in the right direction so we don't have to take further action as well. You know, we, we have a limit that's coming up that we have to meet. We might get a variance from it. We might get to kick it down the road, but, you know, eventually they usually like you to deal with it. So we, we have to be mindful of that and we still want the people to get the water quality that they want and deserve and the companies to be able to provide that service, but we need to do it responsibly. And I think that they were reasonably excited for the opportunity to have these grant funds to hopefully access and, and help make some changes.
Mr. Jeff?
I just kind of, I would say a reminder to the council that back several years ago, when we started this discussion on doing this and in talking with MMU as far as redoing the softener, the water plant, part of the agreement was, if we go back and look at that, that states in there that the city of Marshall would be committed to meeting the goal up to the point of passing an ordinance that would restrict the use of water softeners. So we, we do have, you know, that as kind of a, something out there that if it takes that to, you know, to meet the criteria which we need to meet, we've already said that, you know, if it gets that bad, we will have to pass an ordinance restricting water softeners. That's not what we want to do, obviously, and that's why we're doing this in the first place. Yeah, I, yeah, and thinking about that, you know, a little bit. Whoever came up with that was councilman Meister or whoever, saying maybe going more back to the company as an incentive to go in and check this out and see if that's an old water softener or whatever, offer that. That, you know, that might be something a little bit more. And maybe it channels through, they're, you know, they get invoice for it or whatever, the invoice a customer for doing that. Maybe it is something that, you know, the companies can work on or choose to work on if they want to.
And that, that's the intent, right?
That is the intent, that the rebate would go to the contractor.
Right. So we've had good discussion on this. What are the wishes of the council in support of this program?
I make a motion to support the program.
Second motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And a motion passes. Agenda number 19, Consider, or excuse me, agenda number 18, Consider the Approval of the Non-Union Employee Wage Schedules for 2022 to 2024. With this, nice Sheila Dubs, Human Resources Director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Earlier this year, on February 22nd, the council approved and authorized staff to implement a salary structure and step schedule that was developed by Gallagher as a comprehensive classification and compensation study for the non-union employees. That salary structure represented the 2021 wage data. For your consideration this evening, our salary schedules for non-union positions, which include full-time, part-time and paid-on-call positions for a three-year period, 2022 through 2024, with a proposed general wage increases of 2% for 2022 and 3% for each of 2023 and 2024. These proposed increases and effective dates are consistent with the agreements approved by the council for both the LELS police officers and the Police Supervisors Union. I'll make one note on the paid-on-call schedule for the firefighters, that the hourly rate of 6,250 for the state hazmat responses is a rate that is set by the state of Minnesota in our state contract. And the city is reimbursed if our fire department staff are needed on this type of call-out. It is extremely rare that this occurs. With that, I can certainly address any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Sheila. Questions?
Move approval of the agreement.
A second.
By Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And a motion does pass. Agenda number 19, Consider Appointments to Various Boards and Commissions. The council did meet in a special session earlier this evening, late afternoon. And based on, on that meeting and the interviews that occurred there, I would recommend that Brent Snodgrass be appointed to the Airport Commission for a new term that would expire May 31st, 2025. That Bryce Gorder will be appointed to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, filling a term that will expire December 31st, 2022. And John Rickarn be appointed to the, reappointed to the Public Housing Commission. And that term, second term would expire May 31st, 2025. I'd offer that as a recommendation and entertain a motion to affirm.
Move to affirm.
Second. Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. The motion passes. Okay, the, we'll move then for, to agenda number 20, Commission Board Liaison Reports. Planning Commission, we've already acted on Planning Commission. Regional Development Commission met this past Thursday. The board met, the annual meeting of the Regional Development Commission is, will be the second Thursday of July and that will be held in Marshall. And I believe we, council either has or soon will receive invitations. You're all welcome to attend that. So with that, we'll move then to rest. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Airport Commission met earlier this week. I was unable to attend. The Southwest Damage Sports Commission meets tomorrow at noon and I don't have anything to report on any of the others.
Okay.
I, I would like to remind people, there is a community meeting tomorrow morning from 7:30 to 8:30 at the Merit Center with our senator and our representative. So it's a town hall meeting. If you're able to attend, I would suggest we attend.
Good. Steve?
Cable Commission has not met. Community Services Advisory Board has not met. Economic Development meets tomorrow.
Steve, John? Steve, John?
The Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission met. I was not able to attend that meeting. Public Housing Commission met yesterday. Number of topics, discussion, there was an update and some modification or discussion on their washer dryer, maintenance agreements, getting going. Also, approval of a maintenance agreements for the elevator. Couple of things that have just needed some updating on that. There'll be going through an energy audit here in the, the future as well. We did have some wind damage around a couple of the units. Nothing really serious. Trees down that were taken down. One vehicle was, a person's vehicle was parked in driveway, the tree landed on it, quite possibly totaled the vehicle. But that was handled through their own insurance company. The other one, the home only had a, actually, a couple of shingles broken, very minor damage. So lucked out pretty well in that. So it's about it.
Okay. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. CDB met, and Cassie and Adri are busy working on what they're going to call an industry site with a Facebook page. And that industry site will allow hotels and restaurants to see what may be coming up in the future, so everybody can see if there's going to be a, a number of baseball tournaments, hockey tournaments, whatever the case be, in town on a particular weekend. I think the mayor sent out or had city staff send out the article that was recapping about a blog of this people's experience in Marshall during the Craft Beer Festival. And I think they was very well received from stopping at Walnagrove Mercantile multiple times to having a very good time at the Craft Beer Festival, and which was an overall success with attendance and vendors. They're looking at Fairbanks Ice Dogs maybe coming in the 2nd and 3rd of December. They would probably stay in Marshall about 13 days to practice with the schools and things like that. We're also planning a concert called Prairie Jam on the Thursday evening of Homecoming, SMSU Homecoming on 9/29, so more information will be brought forth on that. And also to bring up at, at a meeting earlier, about looking at possibly establishing an additional boundaries for getting people to the boards because we're having trouble having a quorum. Marshall Line County Library met last evening. The city and the county had a joint meeting to discuss the 2023 budget, and that was on June 10th. And I think Michelle got some indication of what the city and the county were looking at, and she has implemented or started to look at ways to implement that, that number. We talked about the preliminary budget for 2023 and the timeline for such. So they're going to look at maybe presenting that, to, Michelle will present to the city on, in the end of July, and then maybe having a final budget done probably in October sometime. What's amazing is that the library, not only in Marshall, but they continue to see a tremendous increase in visitors. When they used to say, they used to get five people in Cotwood, now they're getting 13, you know, which isn't a big number, but for visitors in Cotwood, that's a big number. The visitors in Marshall are up 91% over last year, and last year, again, was a COVID kind of a year. So it's, they're starting to see more and more, and Michelle said normally May is a, is a down month, you don't see, but it's, was really different this year because they didn't see a down month. In fact, they seen an increase on it. So they're also looking at the possibility of, of establishing a policy, and the board will be involved with that, of renting out their rooms for use for bridal showers and things like that, graduation receptions, just to help increase revenues, to help offset some of their expenses. So that's all I have. And Marshall Area Transit will meet on Thursday. Thank you.
Russ, did you want to talk about the budget options that Michelle had, or do you want me to?
Well, I, I, you know, we both can. I mean, Michelle presented a budget, I think, was, was starting at, because of the implementation of the, the salary and wage schedules, that, you know, the salary is probably going up the most, well, in fact, it is going up the most with, with all the other line items. There are very little increase whatsoever, or no increase, and even some decreases. We've talked about getting rid of the van. The van is, it's in good shape. It needs tires, it needs maintenance, but it's, I don't even know if it's going on, probably 20 years old. But Michelle presented a budget at first of nine, was it 9%? I don't remember.
I think that went to the board, and then it was...
It tabled down to three, to, to 3.3, something like that. And I think the county is going to act and see what they can live with and, and to go from there, if they're going to add anything, yeah.
Yeah, the, the three, I'll call them scenarios, you know, show the, the, kind of the impact of different options and what the budget impact would be. One would be the bare bones budget, but keeping the service level exactly as it is right now. And that was, my recollection is about seven and a half, 7.6% increase that it would, would need. The other option would be, or a second option she presented, was to eliminate the outreach. And that's where the van would be sold and the outreach that currently happens with, like, delivering to daycare, delivering to the nursing homes and assisted living, that that would go away. So the service, point of service in Marshall would be the library and not the outreach, with the exception perhaps of use of volunteers to do some of that. That brought that, that scenario down to about 3.5%. And then the other scenario would be, you would call this kind of the nuclear option, that you would close the cottonwood and balliton branches, and then that would result in a 0% increase. So, you know, and there's, there's things in between all of those. It isn't like just this option, or this option, or this option. There's variations in between that, that could be considered.
And Michelle explained that as well last night, and, and more information since our meeting is that they're constantly looking at ways, but they're like everybody else. Books are increasing, but they're getting a savings on utilities. They continue to get a savings on utilities. We knock on wood that there's no building repairs. But, yeah, the, the two county commissioners there, they thought that would almost be political, I don't know why I use the word political suicide, if they closed the two branches in Ballaton and Cotwood, because those people over there deserve the service too. So that, I think that third option of closing the branches was just almost immediately disregarded. We're not going to consider that option at all. So the county will act, I think, first, and I think they'll probably talk about it next week at their, at their board meeting, and we'll see what goes from there. Thank you for your input, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else, Russ? Jim?
With all that I have.
We'll move then to council member individual items. Jim, we'll start with you then.
Oh, I just, one quick one here. At the last meeting, John had mentioned something about we're having issues with power. The best way to prevent that, Steve looked baffled. John had mentioned that we, the MMU was warned of a possibility of, slight possibility of rolling blackouts. MMU will be here in two weeks to address that. But I was gonna say, the best way to pre, help prevent that is when it's 100 degrees outside, don't do your laundry. Again, like you said, Steve, common sense. Just use common sense. If it's hot out, do your laundry at night. Limit your use. And with 100 degrees on Sunday and Mondays, to my fellow Marshall citizens, be careful out there. That's hot. That's all I have.
Russ?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Nothing. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to, to build on what Jim said about the rolling, rolling blackout, we should always conserve energy when and where we can, but understand that this isn't a local issue. This is on, based on a legacy of, well, I, I've always, my covenant had always been to not get political, especially more than the area that Marshall, I think, is the regional hub for. However, that said, I think it's time to talk about the elephant in the room a little bit, in that actions taken in the last eight or 10 years to fix a problem that we see coming, and that's climate change and, and arguing about the causes. I don't think you can argue the, the effects. But shutting a primary utility that we all rely on for quality of life and, and basically the guarantee of, of healthy life before we have a viable and dependable alternative is, is lunacy. We live in a state that, that draws a pretty hard line on our environment, and our state takes pretty hard action. We've shut down a lot of peaking power plants, and I know we'll get more detail when the MMU manager comes in two weeks, but he also has to be very careful politically about what he says. I don't, I don't work where I used to work anymore, so I can say what I want now. When we shut down power plants, that there's, the, one of the utilities distributors that serves Marshall, their chairman of the board is a good friend of mine. They just started up a new power plant, a coal-fired power plant in Gillette, Wyoming. A brand-new coal power plant in Gillette, Wyoming. The state of Minnesota opposed a natural gas expansion of the Big Stone, Big Stone Power Plant just over our border into South Dakota. Okay? That prevents some of the rolling blackout potentials that we have here. The EPA went in to certify the stack emissions on that power plant in Wyoming. They stopped the test because they thought there's something wrong with their instruments because the exhaust was cleaner than the intake. So they reset and ran it again, got same results. I don't think that's an accident. So I'm just saying that at some point in time, we need to talk about the elephant in the room and maintain the technology that keeps us healthy and happy so that we don't live in a third-world country. I'm looking at taking discretionary funds now. I'm buying a standby generator to put next to my house, so if I'm not home and the power goes out, I don't lose my freezers. So just saying, I'll stop there. On a positive note, going around town, I, I see that D and G did a great job on our parking lot behind the, the Wooden Nickel.
RNG.
Our RNG. They've got, they had equipment in there. I don't think they could have moved another piece of equipment in without playing dueling sticks. So they got that site prepped, and now Hess Concrete has been in there the last couple days. If you have a chance, just take a swing by there. They're going to have that project done in, in a real quick, short order, and it looks awesome already just with the work they've done. So my hat's really off to engineering and to the contractors that came in to do the work. So nice job, and thanks, thanks, folks. That's all I have. Thank you for letting me throw my political hat out there.
Steve?
How can I top that? I have nothing.
Let me just say two things, kind of following up Craig. The, we're meeting, really, on an emergency management update on what truly would be the impact if there is a rolling blackout, and that, and what does that mean? That doesn't mean the whole community. It might mean an industry, or it might mean, you know, some other more limited. So I think, I think we need some definition of what, what really would that mean? And is it for 15 minutes, or is it for...
Eight.
Right, you know, so, so we have a meeting later this week, and then after that, then probably would be in a better position of what should Marshall residents do or prepare? Because I think the last thing you want to do is, is have people make unnecessary purchases that they'll never, ever use, you know? So, so we want to get the right information out there, so. The second thing I was going to mention is in regards to the 150th planning. And this planning committee has been meeting frequently, and the subcommittees have been meeting frequently. And so the 150th events have actually already started. The first event was the Community Bingo at the Red Baron Arena. That was attended by about 400 people. The, and it was really a good turnout. Sharon was one of the guest callers, and...
I won't be asked again.
So, so that, that was a good community event, and the Legion certainly was, I mean, they're experts in, in running a program like that. So, so their assistance was really helpful. There's trivia that is on weekly on the Marshall Radio. There's other events that are planned. The, the art piece, where there was a $20,000 grant that was received from SMAC, is under construction right now at Independence Park. I believe they poured the base, or are pouring the base for what that structure would be. And there's been, this is kind of a community art participation, and there's already been one participation, or maybe two, that young people or anyone could be involved in. And of course, the events will culminate with the, in conjunction with Sounds of Summer on, on August 18th to 20th. So lots of planning and lots of, lots of good efforts have gone in. The book is currently being reviewed. Members of the committee are assisting with the research of the decades, all the way back to 1872, and that process is still continuing. They do expect the book to be probably one of the last things that would be available, and that probably will be about the third week of September. So, and then that will end the celebration. With that, I'll turn it then to our staff reports, starting with City Administrator Sharon.
Just a couple of comments on the audit. If you look at page 108 of the audit, it gives you a really good description of how we budgeted in 2021 and what the variances were. There's a lot of discussion about revenues exceeding. That was a comparison to 2020. That was an abnormal year. The general fund is where we have the most control. Some of the other fund balances, or funds, rather, less control. So what you'll see there is less revenue than budgeted, and our expenditures by department, most departments underspent their budget. They did not exceed expenditures. The fund balance change, a large portion of that was due to a $250,000 transfer, and thanks to EJ for pointing this out to me. That was my question. He helped me interim here. That was to set aside some funds for the, for the Aquatic Center. So we created a, a project code for that. Eventually, once we move forward with that, that'll be reimbursed by bond proceeds, which then will be reimbursed by sales tax revenue. So I just kind of wanted to point out those things. If you look at revenues expenditures, very, very close to what, or in the fund balance, rather, very close to what we kind of predicted for use of fund balance. But at the same time, you know, a little concerning as we go forward, inflation is going to be a concern in 2023 and, and how to pay for some of those things. Secondly, just a reminder, I know this was put in your email on Friday. Probably should have sent out another one on Monday or today. We do have an HRA meeting. Following this meeting, scheduled to set a public hearing, it should be fairly short, but our EDA director has an interested party on a parcel of land, so we did set that for following this meeting. So I just want to remind that. Apologies for not sending that out again on Monday and Tuesday like I did on Friday. And that's all I had on, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Okay.
Quick question. Where, where are we right now with the, you know, the horrible increase in fuel prices? Where, where are we at budget-wise on, on that, or are we going to be able to absorb that? I guess everyone's looking at me.
And we know that some of our expenses are higher. I mean, Preston has communicated with EJ on some of the pool chemicals, definitely had some impact. We know that the IRS recently adjusted their mileage reimbursement. That's not a, a factor so much for us in our budget because of our fleet pools and, and how we manage that via policy. But obviously, there's a recognition that the fuel cost is going to have an impact. And I think we'll see it shortly. We're nearing the end of June. EJ and his staff will, will offer to you the second quarter budget. And again, we met today and talked about a little deeper analysis on what it looks like, and hopefully, EJ can do a little forecasting going forward. And I hope I didn't steal all your thunder, but why don't you add a few comments if you've had more analysis?
I was just gonna say, we don't have the answers necessarily right now. It's going to play out in each department where there are, just with inflation in general, there are a number of items that are costing more that, you know, can, can they shuffle to make it work? Like was asked earlier with that agenda item of, of making sure it fits within the budget. Can that be done with everything? I don't know that answer today. We need to kind of talk to the division directors and, and see where we're at.
Because on fuel, we still buy with the county, right? We're in a partnership with the county on most of our vehicles, or not?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And so, I mean, I, I know that to a certain point, you can contract, but you're not going to contract out of double, you know, fuel costing twice as much. And, and I don't know how quick they, I mean, I just know, like, with my, with the truck, it's crazy what it's doing right now. It's, you know, I, I get more revenue for fuel than I do for freight. Luckily, we have a surcharge. I get most of that back on the invoice, but it's crazy. Okay, thanks.
Anything more, Sharon? Jason?
I'll be brief. You've probably noticed more paving going on in the park, so that's a good thing. They'll continue paving through the rest of the week, for sure. So we'll keep watching that project change and, and for the better. Rose parking lot is going quickly, which is nice. They'll pave that this week as well, and that should be by the end of the week, all paved and curing and ready for the next phase, where we'll have our street department... and curing and ready for the next phase, where we'll have our street department come in and help us put signs and striping down.
Yeah, I hear Dean was the low bid on striping.
Unfortunately, the street department was the low bid. And Holber Road is the other project that's kind of started. You've seen the street surface being removed, temporary access in place. Utility work should start this weekend.
They unloaded pipe today, the Big Storm Pipe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's all I've got.
Very good. Thank you, Jason. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Block 11, that's closed. All the documents have been signed, sealed, delivered, recorded, so I would hope that we would see some materials being delivered and construction being started on that project. And then I did get a notice from the Minnesota Department of Agriculture regarding the Helena cleanup. They're not done. The MDA is requiring an additional test water sampling well to be put into place, eight to 10 more sampling stations to be done regarding specialty chemical inspection, and under the Quonset Building. As long as that Quonset Building is standing in place, Helena is responsible for any subsequent cleanup, whether it happens this year or 10 years from now, that's not a free site until the Quonset's down, the concrete's removed, and sampling is done underneath it. So that may, we may have to have a discussion about, do we demand that they take the building down now as part of the sale process?
I think the building's naturally coming down. I mean, it's...
I know, I know. It's open at, it's open at both ends, and I, I mean, we could issue an abatement order, take it down, and then, because that won't, that's just part of the MDA, Department of Ag requirements. As long as that building's in place, Helena's on the hook, you know, even if we close on the sale. Yeah, so.
And that was the message that when Commissioner Peterson, Tom Peterson, visited the site, that was our discussion is the, let's not forget about what's underneath our building too.
Yeah. I, I think it's okay to talk about this in open session because it's part of the purchase agreement, but you know, it goes back to the whole thing with, if that, if they take the building down and there's issues underneath, we still share in that cleanup as long as they're in the ACRA program and the, in the Ag reimbursement. There's just, to me, no tangible reason to drag your feet on that, and especially if, if we close on that property and then we take the building down and that contamination shows up later, we really aren't obligated to that anymore because we've got title to the property. So it's just, there's, to me, there's no financial good reason in their position to, to continue to operate this way.
Jason?
Maybe this is a good time for me to offer something as well. You know, I talked with John Peterson from TKDA recently regarding Helena. The Department of Aeronautics has administered or issued their willingness to fund our purchase, and since we're not ready, don't have a timeline, John Peterson is recommending that we just hold off on accepting that, and he says that when we're ready, once we get some more environmental information, and they, they're doing a little research on their end as well, when we have all of that together, we'll just resubmit. That's what he is recommending. So though we have that award offer, he's really recommending we, we leave it be.
Good info.
Okay. And he is hopeful that we would get another award when we come forward, so.
This is one of those where, and I've said along, this has been going on for five and a half years. This is where, this is where the speed of government gets made fun of. I mean, this, this should not take this long.
This isn't really even speed of government, though. This is, this is the corporate owner of the property just not processing the process at all. I mean, there's, I've never seen anything like this. It is absolutely amazing.
I mean, it's, yeah, their building, like you said, Dennis, we may have to do something with that building if they take it down or not. It's going to come down.
Yes.
It's a nuisance. There, it's making a negative impact to the neighborhood.
Nicely played. There it is.
Dennis mentioned the closing of the sale on Block 11, and Lauren may want to comment on this, but if I have this incorrect, but June 21, 11 o'clock is the groundbreaking for the, the construction.
They actually sent invites out. Yes.
Good. Okay. With that, you have the remaining items on the agenda, the administrative brief, the building permit data, and the listing of upcoming meetings. Any questions on any of those items? Is there anything else to come forward this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
It's all moved.
Second. Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim to adjourn. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll do it by voice vote. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion passes.
No pressure, EJ.